You can go ahead and start, Dominic.
Okay, very good. Want to welcome everybody to the Newington Town Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for March eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. And if you could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Noreen, if you could do the roll call, I'd appreciate it.
Certainly. Chairman Kane.
Air filter.
Commissioner Claffey.
Okay.
Commissioner Claffey. Commissioner Hagerty.
Here.
Commissioner Havens.
Here.
Commissioner Lenaris.
Here.
Commissioner Trister.
Here.
Commissioner Woods.
Here.
Commissioner Droz.
Here.
Commissioner Gill.
Here.
Commissioner Pasquarelli.
Here.
You're all set.
Thank you, Noreen.
You're welcome.
And we're gonna, we're gonna sit Commissioner Gill for Commissioner Claffey. I don't believe there's any changes in the agenda. So the next thing on the agenda, on the agenda is public participation for, if I was not listed on the agenda, is there anybody either on Zoom or in public would like to participate during public participation? Please come forward.
There's no one online, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next thing on our agenda is our zoning enforcement officers' report. So, I'll go to the commissioners to see if they have any questions for our zoning enforcement officer. Commissioner Gill.
The, Main Street, M and T Bank. Was it, was there a banner up there on the building or what? No, what, as far as Dunkin' Donuts, what does Dunkin' Donuts have to do with it?
That's usually, it's, there's two property owners in one building. That's all. It's just, that's why I just put Dunkin' Donuts, M and T Bank.
So there was nothing is.
No, nothing with Dunkin' Donuts, no. No, they just had a banner up while they were doing the renovations in there.
Okay, now, is there any way of them getting permission to do something, you know, when they're opening a business or?
Yeah.
Something that you.
But you could get a permit for a temporary banner for fifty days, a calendar year, so that that's fine. They just didn't do that. I, I, I let it stay up through construction when they had their sign, when the sign company came out and put up the regular sign and just asked to take down the banner.
Okay. Yeah, no, I'm just, yeah, it seems, a lot of this seems to be so.
Yeah, so.
Of what you have to go through. Now, the Dunkin' Donuts on Cedar Street, that was, uh, was that about the construction also, or was that something?
Brought the A-frame signs down into the right of way, I guess to say the store was open but the drive-through was closed or whatever, vice versa. So they were out there for a couple of days. I kind of worked with them. When they were done, they just pulled them in, pulled them up back to the door, so.
Okay, all right, that's, yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Fantastic. Great job, Eric. Okay, well, moving on, um, is there any remarks from commissioners? Hearing none, we'll move to the first public hearing and I'll ask Commissioner Havens if you could read the first public hearing petition oh-three dash two-three.
Before or after the procedures?
Oh, I'm sorry. If you could read the procedures first. Thank you very much for catching me on that.
The procedures for public hearings. The order of proceedings of public hearing shall be as follows. A, convening by chairperson. B, reading of the notice by the commission secretary or commissioner designated by the chairperson to act in their stead. C, presentation by applicant. D, town planner report on the application. E, persons wishing to speak in favor of the application, limited to three minutes per person. F, persons wishing to speak in opposition to the application, limited to three minutes per person. Rebuttal by the applicant. G, limited to five minutes total. During a public hearing, it shall be within the discretion of the chairperson, whether the time limitations may, should be varied slightly, provided the commission consents to any such variance by majority vote.
Thank you.
You are welcome. And petition zero-three dash twenty-three, special permit, section three point four point seven, for the conversion of a home at one hundred Demming Street into four residential units. Applicant contact, NVB Property LLC, Vinnie Pastor, owner, NVB Property LLC.
Very good, thank you. Will we go right to a staff report on this first, if it's okay?
Sure. So this came about, there was a, over the summer, there was, the prior owner was trying to sell the property and their attorneys asked for a certificate of zoning compliance, which I could not fully get them because I could not locate a special permit for this existing four-family house. Um, they went through with the closing anyway and the new owner just wants to formalize what's been in existence for, you know, quite a while. So that's pretty much it. I don't see any problems with it. It meets all the zoning requirements that we require for older home conversions.
Okay, it meets all the requirements. Is, is the applicant, would you like to add anything if the applicant online, or are you the applicant? No.
I do not, I need to see.
Yes.
Do you not see anybody online?
This is pretty much, uh, just to correct some paperwork. Uh, it's been in existence for, what, over ten years, I think, right?
At least. Over that. Yeah, and then the, the fire marshal has been inspecting it since nineteen ninety-eight as a multifamily.
Okay.
And their last inspection in February of last year, there was no outstanding violations or compliance issues. Doing some other research on another matter, I did come across the other part of the farmhouse, sixty-eight Demming, which was approved as multifamily back in the forties. So it's possible that, moved it over, or maybe they got an approval later another time. I don't know. I haven't been able to locate one.
Okay, very good. Any questions for staff commissioners? All right, we'll go to, uh, public. Is there anybody on public that would like to speak in favor of this application, either online or in here? Hearing none, is there anybody wishing to speak in opposition to this application? Hearing none, if there's no objection, I suggest that we, uh, close petition oh-three-two-three and move it to, uh, old business for, for action.
So move this show.
Motion made and move by, uh, Commissioner Havens. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Lenarz. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously to move petition oh-three-two-three to old business. Next thing on our agenda is approval of our minutes of TPZ meeting, minutes of two twenty-two twenty-three. Entertainer motion?
Motion made by Commissioner Havens. Do I have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Gill. Uh, any discussion? Any corrections to the minutes?
Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously for approval of the minutes. Last thing, uh, on the agenda is new business. We had a, an informal discussion, uh, concerning Newington Junction TOD. I put this on the agenda so that we could, um, get an update from the town planner and also get, Commissioner's opinion on whether or not they'd like to move forward with, um, a TOD regulation, um, for that area, for Newington Junction. Uh, before we go to commissioners' comments or questions, I'll ask the town planner to give us a report, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so I've been able to, um, go through some of the past, uh, planning efforts, uh, back to two thousand and fourteen. Um, the primary study that was done looking at three different areas of potentially of, uh, Newington Junction TOD, kind of looking at how to, what type of development could be there, you know, in the areas from, um, Chapman Street to the south, to, uh, the parcels on a Taverner Circle to the west, uh, Town Line to the north, and then, uh, to the stream running parallel to Day Street to the east. So previously, the extent was, um, a little larger when it was looking at the different type of transportation uses that would be in the area. As we know, the fast track, uh, station is there currently right now. Um, going through that, uh, more recently, actually, a study has been done by CROG. It's actually in, it's almost complete. Um, I reached out to them the other week and, um, they plan to have it done by April. What that study really is, is looking at taking, um, the TVDD, the Transit Village Design District, looking at what we have for densities, what we have for allowances, kind of taking a couple of lots and seeing what could be built, and then from there, doing a pro forma to see whether, actually, whether what we could have under our regulations if we were to apply those to these lots, um, if it would actually pencil out at the end of the day, uh, which is a very important thing when you're actually looking at creating regulations to make sure that what you're actually looking to regulate can be built. Um, so that's kind of where we are in the process. Uh, we do have our own, um, internal review, also looking at, um, different assessments, uh, square footage costing, what we can figure out in that area as well. So we kind of have parallel paths, uh, tracks. Again, the, the concern is, you know, getting as much data as I can, um, pulling the historic information, but looking at current market conditions and seeing, does it make sense, um, to put that in place, what tweaks need to be in place? And from there, uh, would bring, start bringing some draft regulations in front of you, looking at map extent, um, really how far, if you want to go all the way from the TOD, uh, from the current station, all the way up to, uh, West Hartford, uh, Town Line, uh, which was kind of the thought previously, or what the extent, uh, the commission would like to see the TOD established.
Good, very good. Questions for the town staff from commission members or your opinion on, um, on the Newington Junction TOD regulation? Any, any commissioners?
So just to get an understanding, there isn't, I thought TOD, it's, it's not a TOD zone now over by Newington Junction.
Correct. Yeah, it's just the underlying zoning districts.
What are the TOD zones that we have? I know we have Cedar Street. Is there's two others, I believe?
One other. One other. Just the Fen Road.
Fin and Cedar, correct.
So we'd be looking at adding a third TOD district is what we're talking about?
Correct. Yeah, and that was actually, um, part of the, uh, previous, um, when the TOD was being looked at again was Cedar, Fen. This area was looked at as well. Um, it just wasn't established at that time.
Does anyone know why that was? I wasn't around for that.
Yeah, I wasn't either, so.
Any other commissioners have any questions? Okay, if there's no other questions, you'll keep us updated on that as best you can, please.
Dominic, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Woods, go right ahead.
Yeah, I know it's a little complicated because some of us aren't there and I appreciate your patience. Oh, I just want to comment that I'm glad this is back up in front of us again and I do support moving forward on this. I think it's time, you know, that we definitely come up with a plan, um, that we feel will fit the neighborhood and the town. And I think it's going to take some time for us to, to work it all through, but I'm glad, uh, to see that it's, it's back on the, on the drawing board. And again, I'm willing to do whatever it takes to move this forward and work together as a commission to make sure that we get it right for the town.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Woods. Any other comments from commissioners? Very good. Thank you very much. Okay, um, next thing on our agenda, we have some petitions, uh, for public hearing scheduling coming up. I don't know if, uh, town staff wants it. Oh, I'm sorry.
Old business.
Okay, we will go to old business, since I skipped that by mistake. Commissioner Lenarz, if you could read that, um, petition and then the motion.
Petition zero-three dash twenty-three, special permit, section three point four point seven, for the conversion of a home at one hundred Demming Street into four residential units. Applicant contact, NVB Property LLC, Vinnie Pastor, owner, NVB Property LLC. Move to approve the special permit application at one hundred Demming Street for the conversion of an older home into four residential units. Reasons for the approval: The applicant meets the special permit criteria in sections three point four point seven and five point two of the regulations.
Okay, very good. Do I have, um, a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Havens. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, now we will go to petitions for public hearing scheduling. I'm not sure if the staff has any comments on those. Uh, but as commissioners can see, we have a couple of things coming up for our next meeting and we will go to a town planner's report.
Yeah. So, um, just to, uh, inform the commission that I did, um, submit the, uh, New England Junction Trail Extension Grant. Um, that's to connect, uh, from, kind of where it dead ends right now. So this is the fast track trail that goes, connects down to Caesar Street. Um, there's other municipalities and I know, um, New Britain's looking at connecting trails. This, uh, this round of the grant has more money than it had last time. So the, the town did go for the grant on the last round and did not get it. Um, I worked with the grant writer to add more to the grant and kind of bring it forward. So, uh, hopefully we can, um, get the funding. Again, this is for a feasibility study, um, to figure out where the trail will go. And then from there, with the feasibility study, again, identifying parcels of concern, identifying what we can do to move towards design, uh, once we get the route for the trail. Um, so that has been submitted. Uh, that is a DEP grant. Another item, um, that has been brought up, and, uh, this actually is brought up prior to my getting here as well, is regarding, uh, one of the cannabis type uses that is not within, uh, Newington's, uh, zoning regulations. So Newington zoning regulations have cultivators, micro cultivators, and then it has, um, retail sales. But there is another use which is packaging, uh, which isn't in the regulations, which is specifically spelled out by the Public Act for the state of Connecticut and isn't in our regulations. Um, we've had some interest, um, from people calling and seeing if that was something that, uh, the commission would be amenable to looking at the zoning regulations and adding in. So that's kind of an item for discussion for the commission to see whether that's something that you would like me to look at, proceed with, or from there, again, to kind of talk about the use. So you have cultivators, a lot of cultivators actually do a lot of their own packaging on site. Uh, but some cultivators have excess, um, that they can actually process on site. So you're talking about, um, primarily, you know, taking, uh, cannabis, packaging it in whatever package size, um, breaking it down, packaging it into pre-rolls, and then I would be working with the applicant to figure out what extent, you know, further they would go. But again, this is one that is permitted by, um, statute, but it's just not in the Newington regulations.
Okay. We'll open up for, uh, commissioners' comments. This, would you like the town planner to explore the regulation on that and try to allow that? Come back to us and propose something?
Yeah, I mean, it's already here now. We have, we have several different varieties of it. I feel that that's probably a, a small parcel of it. It's not like you're for or against it. We already have it and it's allowed and it's not an issue. This is a small parcel of the way they do their business. So it's just, I mean, I would love to know more about it, I guess, and what it entails, but I guess, you know, that's, that's pretty good, I guess.
Commissioner Droz.
Completely agree with Commissioner Lenarz. Um, just as a purely curiosity sake, has anyone actually approached the town and said, hey, I'd like to be able to, to have that form of a packaging business?
Yes, so, yeah, people, people have called us and said, you know, it's not in your regulations. Is this something, um, that the town would be open to?
Right.
So of course, that's why I'm bringing it to you as the commission, because if you were open to it, I will look at the regulations and, you know, look at the existing zones again. It's, just by looking at it from its level of activity, cultivation, of course, is the most intense activity with odor and concerns. Again, this, you do have raw product, but you're not doing the drying, you're not doing the flowering process that kind of creates that higher level of smell. But that, you know, that would be brought forward, uh, during a regulation and considered.
Well, I think, uh, I think we should keep open mind and, and, um, have you come in with something that you think might work and show it to us? Is that all right with all the commissioners? Okay, very good.
One, one note, uh, in regards to the cannabis, uh, one of the CROGS, uh, is Weathersfield, uh, regarding cannabis regulations. One of my, uh, questions is, um, what kind of distances are we, eh, could Weathersfield put cannabis, uh, near our borders?
Well, I think that, that whenever Weathersfield does some sort of development within five hundred feet of our town, I think there's a communication between the two towns. Is that correct?
Yeah. So whenever, so whenever a town, um, does something, whether it's actually a site plan application, ZDA application, or a, um, a zoning regulation that affects that zone, that's within, again, the five hundred feet, um, a notice goes to the, um, clerk of the adjoining town. So, you know, that, that's where we get these kind of notices from. Um, they get routed right to us and then, of course, they get in your, uh, packets as well. Yeah, I can, I can just add to that. So what that enables, um, us to do, the notice and the purpose of that notice is that, um, we can appear or we can submit commentary to that other town to say, here's our concerns and those could be incorporated into their record.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Good question.
That's how we ended up with an intervenor a number of years ago for Toll Brothers. They came from Weathers, Weathersfield was the actual intervening.
Anything else?
Other than, I'm just continuing forward with pace, looking at the zoning regulations, looking forward to doing some updates, um, to those in the future.
Very good. I was wondering if we could, um, uh, we had started working on, um, a streetscape for the, um, New Britton Avenue Business District. Um, and it kind of, the ball kind of got dropped and I was wondering if you could work with Commissioner Lenarz and try to get that up and kick it again so that we don't lose out on the grant, uh, that we're supposed to be getting for that area. Uh, our town engineer left, as you're well aware, but, uh, Eric and all the businesses and some commissioners worked together. They had quite a few meetings and I, I'd just like to see that, uh, we keep that going.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions or comments from commissioners?
Now, just to echo what, um, Chairman Payne was just saying about that beautification project, I guess an hour would be two planners to go. What was approached, because I have a business in that area and they said there's some state money grants available for beautifications and I was like, yeah, of course. So we set up a few meetings, had a few meetings, um, some were well attended, some weren't, um, by the business owners in our district, but, um, it got rolling pretty good and there was some back and forth and some ideas shared and from the get-go, TPZ had off, business owner on, I was very vocal about what all of the business owners wanted and didn't want in that area. It was great and we just kind of were like, it'd be great to get some monies and some efforts and some, um, you know, some attention to that area. We were excited about it. And then, of course, Chairman Payne just said, you know, some of the parties that hand that were in charge kind of all left and we're all like, well, what do we do now? So I was gonna let you obviously settle in a little bit before I hit you with that one, but I, I appreciate if we could meet at some point and I can kind of catch you up to speed. I don't know if you know anything about it or nothing about it, but it's not the biggest project in the world, but we feel it's pretty cool to get some attention down that end of town. So, um, it's important to me and a lot of the other people. So whenever you get a chance, we'll, we'll chat and kind of go forward with it. Appreciate it.
With you, I'd be happy to meet with all their business, um, business owners on that, you know. Most important thing is, again, to walk the area, see what it is, see what the plans are and identify any way we can make it better.
Absolutely.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions or comments from commissioners? All right, next thing on our agenda is, uh, communications. Does anybody have any questions or comments concerning the CROG letters of two seventeen twenty-three for our staff? Hearing none. Our next thing is public participation. If you're within the Zoom application, please raise your hand if you'd like to participate during public, uh, participation. Calling in to Zoom meeting by telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand to be recognized. Or use star six when recognized to speak by telephone and state your name and address for the record, please. Is there anybody online?
Yes, I believe it's, uh, Rose. Go ahead.
Hi, Rose Lyons, forty-six Elton Drive. It's been a while since I've watched any of your meetings, but I have been looking at the, uh, minutes and so forth, but recently there's been comments on Facebook and I know how you love Facebook comments. So I'm bringing you up to ask whether or not there is any area in our town website that gives the status of the projects that are going on here in town. I know that people have been talking about the Anthony Properties, the old National Welding, and I'm not even sure that that property's been even sold yet, uh, from the town and the other properties on thirty-three thirty-three, Burl and Turnpike, there was some talk that there was some problems with that project. There's been many projects over the last two years that have been approved through TPZ, but the only feedback I've ever seen is once in a while from our town planner. Will bring us up to date during a town, uh, Planning Zoning Commission meeting, but reading off of Facebook isn't always the best and most reliable information. So I was just wondering if there was something on town website where people could go and just see where exactly we were at with various projects. Uh, we well know how many projects were proposed for the top of Cedar Mountain and I think we're at the fourth one in the ten years I've been watching and I don't even know whether there's a shovel on the ground there yet. I recently contacted Eric regarding, uh, Newington Junction and the proposed demolition of the gas station and the car wash and there doesn't seem to be anything going on there yet. Now we're bringing back the, uh, Newington Junction area and making some changes there. I'm just, you know, I'm just throwing this out there. I don't need any answers tonight. I, I'd hate to bother Eric, but I will. And as far as the cannabis goes, I thought that there was some proposed dispensary or something, a Krispy Kreme. I'm guessing they didn't get their, uh, license or whatever. That too would be interesting to find out. And, um, Eric, the next time you tell, you say the word Toll Brothers, could you give me a warning so I'm not having my water and, or my drink and have to go into post-traumatic stress syndrome here? Last but not least, and you know how I love the subject of chickens, I'm just wondering, I don't see any complaints about chickens on the ZEO's, uh, report. I'm wondering if there is even any interest, especially with the rising prices of eggs. I thought perhaps we'd have a lot of permits being pulled to have chickens in the backyard. With that, gentlemen, I will, and Gia, I'm sorry, I don't, I just want to make it a generalized gentleman. Thank you for your time and efforts in doing what you do and I look forward to hearing more about Newington Junction in the future.
Very good. Thank you, Rose. Um, maybe, uh, Eric or, or, uh, the town planner could give uh, everybody a little update on some of the projects that are going on. Eric, you probably have a list of things that, you could tell us what's been started and, and go from there. I'd appreciate it.
Sure. So, um, the apartments at, um, Payne and Maselli Road, they've broken ground and started construction. Thirty-three thirty-three Burl and Turnpike is well under construction. There's no hiccups that I'm aware of. I know they're still dealing with MDC like everybody does. Dakota Properties, uh, on Cedar Street, they have, uh, two residential buildings up and they, in the clubhouse. And I believe they're anticipating some kind of CO in the fall to start. The hotel site at Fen and Cedar has started construction. The Anthony Properties, um, has not closed with the town yet. They're still finalizing some things.
But it's still in the works?
Yes, it's still working. Absolutely. Uh, the East Cedar Site, um, up on the, on the hill was approved. Their targeted construction time is, is sometime this year to begin construction. And that is for, uh, convenience store, car wash, uh, gas station, EV charging station, and then the EV electric vehicle showroom would be started, um, six to eight months after completion of the gas station is what we're being told. Um, they're still finalizing their, their plans, which. Um, they're still finalizing their, their plans, which I think they'll be sending them in next week.
Fantastic. And, uh, you have not been flooded with, uh, people that want to open up, uh, chickens or?
I haven't had, since the summer, I haven't really had any chicken issues. I'm sure now it'll come out.
Is there, when, whatever, in chicken season coming up? Is there anybody else on, uh, from the public that would like to speak either online or here in person? Please come forward.
No one online.
Any remarks from commissioners?
Question, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I think Rose had mentioned, uh, the Dunkin' Donuts gas station on, uh, West Hill.
Yeah.
Did that a couple of years ago, almost.
And it was a family issue, I believe.
Yeah, I don't know what the, the issues are. To that, I did get contacted by an attorney two weeks ago. That wanted all the approvals for that site, so I sent them off, so I assume that something is starting to stir, whether they're. Transferring the property or getting ready to see what all their, you know, approvals are, so.
Commissioner Gill?
Um, there was some communications out there in that internet thing. Um, and, uh, there was some confusion about, uh, addresses and what was going there and what wasn't going there. In the Fen Road area, uh, as far as the hotels and long, long-stay hotels. Um, you know, some of the information, the way I understood it, it was not correct. But I, you know.
The hotel is keeping a Cedar Street address. That's what they want. So they believe they're seven twelve Cedar Street.
Okay. Now, is, i- is there any extended stay hotels?
I believe it is, I believe they have some extended stay. I, I don't know. I mean.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's Woodbridge Springs or Woodbridge Suites out of Florida.
Yeah, because there, there was something that was on the internet, uh, in regards to that. It was pretty detailed as far as what. Uh, things were going on within the town. Uh, but you clarified some of them, you know, to, to get it so that we've, we've got it. We know where we're going in, going forward. Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Gill. Any other questions or comments? I want to thank everybody, and, uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made?
They actually voted before you came in.
Yeah, we voted before you came in. It's all approved, and, uh, good luck with the property.
That was easy.
Yes. Uh, motion to, uh, adjourn. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Motion is, uh, the meeting is over, and thank everybody and thank NCTV. Thank you, and thank you, staff.